Have a motion to approve our agenda. Okay, moved by Armstrong, seconded by Holmes. Jacob, put on your microphone, please, and then if we could rise and say the place of lea.
I find that the United States of America is due to public health. One day, in the middle, we have liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to our COVID update, like to have a special welcome to young William Holmes, who is here celebrating his ninth birthday tomorrow. William?
Happy birthday tomorrow.
No, yes, tomorrow. Yeah. No, not not.
No, well, okay.
Sorry. Someone.
Goes fast enough.
Are you taking notes over there, Ford? What, eight and a minute, Ford?
Hey, nothing wrong with that. Okay, Jess is on the line. We are ready for our bi-monthly COVID update. Jess, good morning to you.
Morning, guys. As of right now, we have had 1,946 total cases.
Could I get that number one more time? I'm sorry, Jess.
Yep, 1,946.
Okay.
Only 12 of those active, so that's exciting news. Seventeen deaths. Our positivity rating is 9.3%, so that's going back down again. That's amazing as well. We've had 5,799 individuals tested. So switching over to the vaccines, we're still just doing the Moderna in the county. We've had 2,242 total doses administered with 684 of those being completed series, meaning the person has had both doses. We are still working hard on that Phase 1A. I mean, I'm sorry, Phase 1B. We will be in that phase for quite some time. That's a very large group of people. And again, that includes the 65 and up population, and then it includes schoolteachers, daycare providers, manufacturing sectors who can't social distance, so on and so forth. Both of our Hy-Vee's in the county are now offering the COVID vaccine. They have Moderna as well. I don't know their schedules. And I, as of today, I don't know how many people they have vaccinated. I do know that they worked hard on it Friday and all weekend. So I'm excited to get an update from them as to how many people they were able to vaccinate over the weekend. I think that's about it. We're still, like I said, we're still pushing hard on this Phase 1B. And we want every, we encourage everybody to sign up if they want to get the vaccine, and we are just working down our list. The one thing I want to stress is we go by the date that an individual signs up. So we have a list, an ongoing list, and we just go by the earliest date that is that has signed up in regard to that 65 and up population. We don't break it down by age. We don't break it down by health risks. It's just by that date of sign up.
So just for clarification, the 2,200-plus vaccinations, that number does not include any Hy-Vee numbers, correct?
As of right now, I don't think so.
Okay. And I think I saw Ryan Hartley in the store yesterday, and it was his understanding that they were going to get 200 vaccines weekly, but he said that their allocation was used up by Saturday evening, I think he said.
Good.
Maybe the supply chain are in. What's your supply promise at this point, Jess?
We are promised 300 a week, and we have to utilize 80% of those in order to get another allocation the next week. But we are planning clinics every week, so we're going to go through all 300 every week.
Good. Thank you for what, four counties in Iowa that are under the 80% threshold. Weekend. No county in southwest Iowa was in that list of four, as I recall.
Yep.
Okay. So what, what is your clinic schedule now for those people who maybe are on your waiting list? What's kind of your plan for the next round of shots?
So we are looking at potentially doing one on Friday. We did, last week we did two large clinics of that 65-plus population. So we're looking at doing one on Friday. The majority of those will probably be that manufacturing sector. We have to take 50% of our doses and give it to that 65-plus, and then the other 50% has to go into that Phase 1B population. So that, as of right now, that's kind of how we're, we're doing our planning process. We are getting very close to being done with that Phase 1B essential workers. So then at that point, once we get all of those folks done, we're going to switch gears and strictly do that 65-plus population.
Okay. Were you able to attend the webinar yesterday with Kelly Garcia and the gentleman from Scoop or Woodbury County?
No, I was not.
Did any of you guys attend that? I didn't get a chance either. Just curious what came out of that. So anything else you'd like to remind us of, Jess?
I mean, we're still pushing the mask. We're still pushing the social distancing. That's still part of the key, the key factors in helping mitigate this, help slow the spread. So I think the more people we get vaccinated, the better off we're going to be, and hopefully not have to wear those masks and not have to do that social distancing.
Okay, I lost part of that. But I think in summary, you're encouraging social distancing, mask wearing, and then you said something that we lost at the very end.
Oh, I just, once we get more people vaccinated and we, you know, move into that more herd immunity, hopefully we can start going away from that mask wearing and going away from that social distancing and hopefully get back to somewhat normal.
Awesome. Well, thank you and your, and your crew. How, how does it look staffing-wise? Have you been able to fill in any of the holes for the contact or the organization of the clinics?
Yep, so I am going to speak with somebody today about that. Hopefully I can get someone, this gal in here to help with answering the phone calls. Our phones are just ringing off the hook, and it is impossible for us to keep up with it all. So answering the phone calls, helping with the scheduling, helping people sign up online if they don't know how, so on and so forth.
And could you give our audience the physical phone number if somebody doesn't want to, or doesn't have the ability to sign up online or gets confused? There is a number with an answering machine. Could you, could you repeat that for us, please?
Sure, yeah. So that number is 712-850-1210, and that is dedicated to COVID vaccine signup. You can call that, leave your information. We want name, date of birth, address, and callback number. Leave that on there, and then we will then take that and put that on our ongoing list.
And I think it's important to note that for those who leave that information on that phone line, don't expect to hear from anyone from public health until which time it's your turn in line for the vaccination. Is that correct?
Yes, definitely. We are, we are fielding a lot of phone calls from people worried that they didn't go to the, phone call didn't go through, or the online didn't go through. It's working. Our services, I mean, our systems are working great. I apologize if we can't get right back to you. We just, we have so many phone calls that we're getting and so many voicemails that we're trying to answer. So it is taking us quite some time to get people, to get responded to people.
Okay. And then unless these guys have some questions, the only other request I would have, Jess, I know that our calls are scheduled every other week. If you hear anything significant regarding the amount of vaccine that we could expect above and beyond the 300 weekly, could, could you shoot us all an email?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any questions, Jacob?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, guys.
All righty. We're a little bit ahead of time. JD will be in in six minutes, so we've got some time to reread minutes and look through claims.
Where, where, where are you going?
So I saw Jane, Jane was up here. Are we, is it, why is it so chilly in here? Is it? Twenty below outside. Good answer.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a. Got a little feedback in here. Not sure why. I think JD was playing on attending.
Yeah.
So please, on his way.
Did you guys get a mail from Ashley Dean regarding a survey for National Institute on Mental Health?
Yes, I did.
And then the other one I got, I want to make sure you guys would see. If I can find this.
From Delbert to jail.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it was sent to him. It's 8:45, and we're waiting the arrival of JD King. And I think I hear him, hear him walk in here. Yes, Shannon. Twenty seventh of February, twenty seventh. Ten o'clock here.
And Jacob just, you know, sometimes we don't, we don't, so we always try to set it up, so.
I'm gonna try. Which one would you go to? Would you go to both, or would you go to this one?
I probably would just go to the one in Shannon, or, but I knew it's a big enough room.
You go to Shannon? You would go to Shannon? To Clarendon, okay. Yeah, here it's just a glade of color and social distance, but I think they got enough room in there.
I may start to send you more stuff to the pleasure mail box.
All right. We'll get JD to the podium, and we'll keep things moving. I have to use the table there, JD, sorry.
Good morning.
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 Fine morning.
Yes.
And you called.
Kind of takes you back to your Fayette County days.
It takes me back further than that. I was gonna take me back to 31 years ago, when I drove out of Alaska in November of 8/9 with a buddy of mine. Done with a four-year tour there. Flew out, I flew my sister up, and she flew out. Actually, the majority of this was shared on KIA lady yesterday afternoon, the news folks there. Website. Weekend was cold, snowy. We did have trucks out Saturday, Sunday, north on the pavements only. Yesterday, we put two trucks out, one north and one south, and we had some blades out, many as we could muster. There were three that did not, one because of emissions issue, the other two fuel problems. We ran primary on the east west roads. There were a few that failed. Majority of the pavements were robbed. Didn't hear many, any problems.
Only one was the fellow with the wood pile that I sent. He was going to call in yesterday. He couldn't get down the road and work the X wood pile, I believe.
Firewood?
Firewood, yeah. No, firewood. He was worried about fire, so, and he was going to call in yesterday. Edwards on team week.
Was it Class B road where you had it?
I, it looked like it from his picture, so I'll see if I can find it again while you're talking.
We did get in a pipe stop last week. Anticipating, I'm wondering if it's right. And along that lines, we have a set of pipes ready for bid to outside contractors. Left them for last fall, and nobody was inclined to bid our work. It's probably, it's in the spring, so we could have that in time this month, next month, or in the summertime.
How many pipes in that project? Six or seven?
Seven. Should be similar to last year's contract part.
Okay.
So in the shop this morning, we had, we had two wood runners in there thawing out. They did thaw out, and we took them outside, put them back in. One of the emissions we didn't do for service anyway, so we'll bring it out to the main shop here tomorrow, the next day, like that one for. 1050, number 50 is, it talks about thermal coating with low, low pressure on the fuel rail. They suggest that we swap out fuel filters and see if that's a problem. The cold weather has certainly been, that was just originally, I guess, extraordinary in the cold. We're working in the shop today, cleaning up things, looking on chains, looking on cutting edges, backer plates. Most of our guys are in the shop. We do not intend to start or run any machines today with extreme cold weather. J-20 was not closed today to begin grid demolition. We talked about that last week. Certainly it's open to traffic, J-20 is. We'll make an assessment with the contractor later this week. If he plans to start next Monday, the 22nd, or even pushing back to the 29th of February. We're still on track for escaping.
So you'll consider the 22nd, if not moving back to 29th, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Depends on what, what, how he, how the contractor is forecasting. What we certainly don't want to do is close the road and then weather it out and not do it work. We grow it open as long as we can, when it's fit to work, then we'll close it when we get one. So other things going on in the engineers' office, primary project development on B-61, really down to South Beach Park State, County. And despite the challenges of colors and properly labeling the colors, again, doing whatever, non-primary colors that we had with last week's construction. Staff doing some trading online and took a test on that one last week. On, on the agenda this year, 21, I'm led by the budget. Road Department, taking the roads before public area at the board meeting sometime early April, the DOT's budget program this week, year 22. And we'll advertise that. What might your questions be for the update? Okay. Okay, we'll call in today. Yeah, we'll check, check.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Oh, 26, 20, 25.
You know, if it's Stevens with a B or a P.
S, T, E, N, R. I just looked it up, it's worth it, is that. And I just. It's our one K, any of the, the weeks, okay.
I can probably tell stories from 5:20, 2:20.
Okay. Oh, no.
Well, we've got a MOA before nine o'clock, public hearing. Just received word from Public Health. I'd like to read this to the record. On behalf of the, this is from Elaine Farwell from the Clarendon Chamber. On behalf of the Clarendon Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, I wanted to share the Page County Public Health was selected as one of the 2020 Spirit of Clarendon Award winners. The following is the award nomination submitted. Jess Erdman and the Public Health team have been challenged to serve our community during a global pandemic. Their services to our community stretch from employers, schools, healthcare, and state agencies. They are true heroes in serving the Page County communities by giving 100% focus 24/7 since March of 2020. In addition, the Page County Public Health staff currently serve on the Clarendon Healthy Hometown Initiative Committee. Now, the official award presentation typically held the Clarendon Annual Banquet due to COVID has been canceled this year. We would be honored to have yourself and Brandy as guests at the 2022 Chamber Annual Banquet. If possible, we'd appreciate scheduling a time at your earliest convenience for a photo op. So congratulations to Page County Public Health. It's awesome. Oh, it just did turn nine o'clock. Yes, sir, thank you. I would like a motion to. It just did turn nine o'clock. Yes, sir. Thank you. I would like a motion to open our public hearing. Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Public hearing is open at nine o'clock. Melissa, could you kind of run us through the numbers, if you would, please?
So this is the budget amendment for this fiscal year. And this was pretty much the stuff that was discussed in the December meeting. Some things in here are, there are some increases in revenues and expenses as well through the chairman's office because of the grant that they received and then also the rest of the areas. And then in the others offices of revenue and expense increase, twenty-two thousand for the COVID election grant. So that was a revenue and expense out for the general election. And then as well, public health received a grant for twenty-five thousand. That was in there included in the revenues that paid as well as the expense sites that they can extend that out. And then there was also forty-eight thousand, nine fifty-eight, um, on the expense side for the grant and that's all for overtime expenses. IT had an increase for the nine thousand two hundred and that was for COVID expenses. Then mental health, there was an increase there for thirteen thousand and that was for the Medicaid region, the region.
Okay, any questions?
Is the four percent salary increase in here any budget, does this make that anything one of those category?
No, this is for this year's, this is this year's budget. So this will just be certain for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Coming.
Any questions from the public? Or comments?
I didn't receive any amendments for you. No, they're not.
So hearing no questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll settle for close the public hearing.
Second, from Jacob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing closed at nine oh three. Now I'd entertain a motion to approve the FY twenty one budget amendment as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Could we roll call it, please?
Armstrong?
Yes.
Florence?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Okay, we have a little bit more time to go through minutes and claims if need be. Nine fifteen, we'll open the public hearing on the minimum proposed property tax dollars. Maximum proposed, yes. Thank you. Somebody's hoping for the right away there. I think so too. I just, John, for the big layers right there. I think that might be me. William, we got the duct tape? I think it's a short.
Had any ice fisherman out, John?
I've had a couple calls, but I haven't seen anybody.
I haven't been out for my walk. I just. Hate this time of year just so. And I'm scared of ice. I just have never been able to be that.
Well, I lost the fire department, I think, last year down there. They're like, look at it, it's like six of your stick.
When I was a kid, my brother, my older brother, he'd take me on a farm, and he liked ice, but he would. And then all of a sudden, it started jumping up and down. I'd see it, it cracked a little bit. That just scared me to death. I was probably about eighty. I just haven't gone out on ice since then. I grew old. Yeah, it's. I think that water's pretty cold.
Yeah.
National flood melissas, national flood melissas. It's national flood melissas now last week. Do everything you can. Morning, Mr. Sheriff Hooper.
We're quick on the day.
Uh, nine fifteen.
Waiting on you. Got about three minutes and then the next item's up. We've been discussing this meeting this morning.
Efficiency.
Yes. How's your department handling this chilly weather?
Well, you're lucky.
I bet you aren't.
Well, I'm making sure.
Yeah.
All right, it is nine fifteen, and I'd like to have a motion, please, to open our public hearing for maximum proposed property tax dollars. Okay, Holmes with the motion.
I'll second it.
Armstrong with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing opened at nine fifteen. Melissa, could you walk us through the resolution, please, and the numbers there?
All right, this is just the maximum property tax dollars. So for the general county services, this will take it to four million. Four billion, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. From the prior year and the rule, it will be one million, four hundred and twenty-six, eighty-four, which is an increase of three point seven eight percent from the prior year.
Any comments or questions? While we wait, any comments or questions? What, what dates do we have available for the public hearing? The second public hearing? The March sixteenth? Yeah, March nine.
I mean, it could be a contributable factor. I guess I didn't look that up.
The way we're in on the budget hearing, somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, there was another issue. Um, I mean, it could be a contributable factor that everything to two as well. So I didn't really look at that much. Fluctuations from last year to this year. So. Um, you know, we had, we increased public health and sharing permit, increased a little bit, so the computer. The main factor that was, that's there responding, we always do the math. When I did it, I looked at it from a special metal aspect, I guess, overall perspective. So. Jump out at the, from that level, I guess.
On that. I just need part of the feedback on that part of the budget.
Any other? Excuse me. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would, oh, JD's got a question. Can you cover the microphone, please, JD? I'm sorry.
For the general reservation of the amount of dollars trade for new secondary roads, something like that, from the road basic. Right here is a million seventy-three thousand. The fiscal year twenty-two would be a million one hundred fifteen thousand, which is a forty-two percent, forty-two thousand dollar increase. And that's in a. Total four point nine. Four million nine hundred three thousand dollars, forty-two thousand dollar increase in property tax.
Out of that four million dollars.
Four point nine million.
Four point nine million five million. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would like a motion to close our public hearing at nine twenty.
When we vote on this, I have a statement about how my vote is.
You can make a statement now if you'd like. Okay. So do we have a motion to close the public?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes, close public hearing at nine twenty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now discuss and approve the resolution. Fifteen twenty twenty-one, I didn't entertain a motion to do that unless there's, then we can have a discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the property tax dollars, resolution number fifteen dash two oh two one.
Okay, go ahead and second. Okay, only with the second. Discussion.
If, now would be appropriate time, if you have an objection.
I'm not gonna, I'm, to vote on this resolution, I have a statement about the why.
Do you like to read your statement now?
Now's the time, I guess I will. All taxpayers, citizens of the state, yes, all supervisors, all, and other language officials. As a new supervisor, I've worked hard in advance to work with the county government, especially in the budget. I think it is equally important for taxpayers to apply the property taxes now and in life throughout the year after year. For that and I, I think we can count the, the county already money to operate, but there should be limits to how much money is needed. And that money must be spent widely in an area of need. At the careful comparison I don't follow, when you develop a team, tax evaluation of the county's seventy-five will hold ninety-eight dollars. It's seven hundred seventy-four, like a nine hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred forty dollars. That comes fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. While that evaluation increases, increase means more tax note to the face county, it also means the tax payer pay more and higher property debt. Proposed county expenses are projected to be sixty million one hundred fifty-three thousand nine ninety-seven dollars, but have come since the year twenty-one, twenty-two. Which then creates almost a hundred eighty thousand dollars, a collection entries of three percent over the current fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-one. The proposed budget includes the state's county line general expenditures of one hundred twenty-six thousand or six point six seven six percent, and the state's rural expenditures of sixty-one thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars or three point seven eight. The latter role expense, expense increase will only to minimal level, expect ironic increase in general expenditures covered expenses from that was due. Sheriff computer funeral, there was an unfortunate pay increase. Eight seventy-four valuable and effective, they're not, only do they receive a respectful pay, but the tax is going to package to include insurance or tires. Counting employee jobs will never exhibit through the unprecedented year long struggle COVID nineteen. I tried to look by example for lower rates, but my motion was on the down. While employees may serve an increase, the question is whether residents who have lost jobs and that's, and the four percent across the board increase appropriate. In comparison, the cost of living increases social security benefits to sudden one point three percent for twenty-one. In light of this and the consideration of tax payers, I think a lesser percentage is more appropriate, therefore, I vote no. On the budget and on the resolution for exceeding the previous year's property tax.
Yes, thank you. Could we roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, we'll wait nine thirty and Chris Greber.
We need to discuss, approve the setting of the budget.
Oh, yes, yes, we do, thank you. March ninth, that's an evening meeting, six o'clock start time, is that what we agreed to?
Okay.
Okay. So it's six fifteen on March ninth. Any motion to support that, to set that date?
I'll make a motion to approve the setting of the budget, public hearing for March ninth, starting at six fifteen.
Okay, we have a second from Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. All right, Chris, stand by, we're five minutes away.
I see that Corey's not there, so I don't know if you can allow me to share my screen or not, Chuck. So I did send an email to all three of you and Melissa about the comparisons, services, totals for budget.
Yeah, go ahead and send it over.
I did, I emailed all three of you already. It's just showing the one line item that's going to be affected by the shared services for expenses for all the services that we're going to provide.
Okay. So can you see it, Chris?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, okay. I don't mind, but it's starting, I, you know, I've got here on the phone.
Okay. All right, we'll keep that up there till we get to nine thirty then. Take a number.
It's very.
Just a quick question for your, budget period here, the major.
Yes.
Here's the thing.
Yeah, March ninth, yeah. Yes, correct. That will be the regular board meeting with budget hearing wrapped up inside. Seeing you, Sheriff, reminds me that when we had the Samuel's group in here last week, they mentioned a potential USDA grant. And I talked with the contact in Atlantic and we had a nice conversation as a webinar today. And I'm going to intend to kind of go through the grant to see, she doubts whether we would be eligible, but she's not sure. Because the county as an applicant would probably not score well with our population. If it was the one community, we'd do better, but I'm going to go ahead and attend and I'll shoot you an email when I find out. Yes, we did get to jail.
I'll see you more.
That's probably all we're going to get there.
That's why they just issued a COVID. It's so far, I will have any virtuals.
So we could stay with COVID for another twenty years.
Yeah, there you go, won't have Bill in jail. That's all we're going to hear from Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, some sort of thing, we not done. And then we had some short videos.
Okay. We'll, we'll put that on the agenda to kind of get to finalize that report if need be, uh, when we talk. You're not going to be here next week, okay. All right, it is nine thirty and let's get back to our agenda. Discuss and prove county agreement with Zetron, State of Iowa, for shared nine-one-one services. Chris Greber is online. Chris, kind of take it through your presentation, if you would, please.
Yeah, the nine-one-one service board had their meeting to approve our agenda, our budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, the upcoming fiscal year. They did approve it with when I presented to Melissa. We did discuss doing some shared services with the state. In doing so, we can add services to Page County while lowering our costs. Unfortunately, the nine-one-one service board cannot enter into an agreement like that. It would have to come from the Page County Board of Supervisors. Because the service board cannot enter into a twenty-eighty agreement or anything like that. So I'm presenting it to you. The one line item that's going to be affected the most, that's going to be reduced out of expenses for us, is the one I gave to you today. This is the one that shows all of our mapping and our computer product programming, the CAD reports, the nine-one-one software, everything we do for, we have to pay out for, to get the nine-one-one services we have. If we enter into a, total there is eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. If we enter into an agreement with the state, we can add some services as far as pre-answer mapping. That is, if a nine-one-one call comes in, a map's going to pop up and show us where that call's coming from. Right now, we have to answer the call before the map will show up. This will benefit us in, if we have a, say, an accident call at Sixteenth and State down here by, or Sixteenth and the bypass down by McDonald's. On one accident, we'll get anywhere from four to seven to ten nine-one-one calls, people that have seen it. So if we have, the nine-on-ones just ringing off the hook and the pre-answer mapping shows all those calls that come from that area, we pretty much know it's going to be an answer, or an accident call. Now, while those are ringing, say, another map pops up showing a call, nine-one-one call coming from Shenandoah. That's going to allow my second dispatcher that's sitting there answering the nine-one-one calls to take that Shenandoah call, because they know that that's not going to be an accident call. So that will give us better service for the people calling in. We'll also be able to add the text messaging, it'll be backup paging system. So when we page something out, the, this new CAD system will automatically send a page or text message to all of the first responders in that area. If it's a Shenandoah fire and rescue, all Shenandoah fire and rescue will get a text message. If it's Clarin Fire and Rescue, Clarin will get it, Essex, Essex will get it, so on and so forth. That will save us, the multiple, we have multiple backup systems now in the county, one on the east side, one on the west side, and they do not talk to each other. So this will be countywide, every department will get that text message automatically. It will also add the EMD, the emergency medical dispatch system, we've been looking for, for the last four years that I've been here. This will provide Page County with the ability to start medical assistance to that nine-one-one caller prior to fire and rescue arriving. So if somebody's having a heart attack, we can help start doing CPR. Montgomery County just delivered a baby over this EMD services that they had up there just recently. It's stuff that the dispatcher can start helping give care to the caller prior to anybody arriving. This will also give us a mobile CAD system. So the sheriff's office in Shenandoah currently have computers in their cars. When we put a call in, as soon as we hit the enter button, it'll send that call to the nearest car that is going to this, this nine-one-one call. So the sheriff's office in Shenandoah right now, according to doesn't have it, but they are discussing about getting these services. Will have that in their cars ready to go before we even put anything out over the radio. So they can get started prior to us even dispatching anything. So those are some services that will be added with a cheaper cost. Now, we will have to add some computers, infrastructures, some softwares, convert some of our software over to the new systems. So there'll be a little bit of upfront cost associated with this. And the way Zetron in the state of presented it to me, we can do this one or two ways. It's up to the board how they want to do this. If we could come up with the one hundred and thirty-seven thousand and change upfront for all this stuff, we're going to have to make a payment for three years as far as shared services. Now take that first line item down to thirty-six thousand dollars a year, from eighty-seven to thirty-six, so to save us fifty-one thousand dollars a year for the first three years. I mentioned to them that I don't think the county has one hundred and thirty-seven thousand sitting around anywhere. I know nine-one-one does not. So they said, well, you could do a payment plan, but then there'd be, you know, that'd be something the board have to enter into and there'd be a finance charge to it. They said, how much could you think you could afford to pay per year? And I said, I don't think we could afford much over fifty thousand. I said, that would be something the board have to decide and, and I'm kind of giving you an idea of what, you know, if it was fifty, fifty thousand dollars a year coming out of the nine-one-one service board. Our total for that line item would be eighty-six thousand. So we're still saving a thousand dollars, which isn't a whole lot. But we're getting more services and we are saving money for the first three years. Then starting in year four, either way, if we do the payment plan or the one hundred and thirty-seven thousand upfront, starting in year four, that line item, the cost will be around sixty thousand. So we're still, we'll, we'll end up saving twenty thousand dollars a year after the, the first initial payments are done with all these shared services we have. That's kind of the whole thing in a nutshell. Does anybody have a question?
As, did your contact indicate in that, over that three-year period, the, the increased cost of any of those services, is that factored into your calculation here?
For the first three years, there will not be any increase in services. After the, starting in the fourth year, they said that they usually go up between two and three percent.
So they're waiving the annual increase on the three-year deal, in other words?
Correct.
Great. So what, what's the finance charge? What's?
They didn't give me the finance charge. They said it's kind of like a loan, you're going to have to apply and then we'll see what the, how the, the county sits with their finances and they would give us the payment. So I told them, I said, well, you know, I couldn't go over the eighty-seven five, because that's what nine-one-one has approved, so I couldn't go over that budget there, so I have to be underneath that.
Like some input from the auditor?
Yeah. Um, the fifty thousand a year, the financing, other options we have for that.
So. Um, so with that one, thirty-seven thousand. Up front. If you pay that upfront, then.
Then we're only paying out thirty-six thousand a year for three years. On the fourth year, we'll be up to sixty-two thousand. Sound like, Chris?
That is correct, yes. If we pay that one hundred and thirty-seven upfront, they won't charge us any kind of maintenance or any kind of software updates or anything else for the first three years. So that line item drops from eighty-seven five to thirty-six thousand. For the first three years.
You said sixty-eight five to thirty-seven, is that right? You said sixty-eight five to thirty-seven.
Eighty-seven five. I think is, I'm having trouble with my screen, did I say that right, Chris?
Yes, currently we budgeted eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for that line item. And if we, if we can come up with that one thirty-seven somewhere, then that'll drop that down to thirty-six.
That's only until year four, so.
Yes, correct.
Year four, then starting year four, it would bounce, jump up to about sixty-two.
And the two biggest advantages are the pre-call mapping and the EMD, correct?
Correct, along with the, the backup texting and the. Correct. Along with the, the backup texting and the mobile CAD, yes. But yeah, the biggest ones are the, are the pre-mapping and the EMD. EMD is the biggest.
Okay.
That's that $71,000 line item we've been trying to pass for three years. So we're getting it for a considerable less amount.
Okay, so I did...
You need that number back on your screen, David.
Okay, so how I looked was, Chris, was you said 137 upfront, but when you still have 137 upfront, you still pay 36,000 a year, correct?
Correct.
But roughly for three years, you're paying out 245,000.
But if you don't, then you're gonna pay?
Eighty, roughly 86,000 per year for the first three years.
Right?
That's the budget amount.
And then is there, I guess, if you pay the 137 upfront versus if you pay it later, is there an additional fee? Like, because you're saying you're gonna have to pay this later, right? No matter what? Or no, the 137 is?
You'd have to borrow the money and make the... They suggested roughly...
So it's basically like 13,000 dollars payment, correct?
Yes, well, yes.
I mean, how I was, I did the 86 tax for...
Yes, yes, 13,000 dollars. With the entry. At that figure that Chris had from them.
Actual, that's actual.
That is, no.
There's no other fee at the end. That's what I guess I'm guessing at the end.
But that's a projection because it's always allowed application for financing.
Right, that $50,000 payment plan, this, gives me the 86 for those three years, that's a rough estimate. We don't know the finance charge yet. It could be higher, it could be lower. I told them we just can't go over the 87.5 because that's all we have budgeted for the year.
Chris, how soon does it have to be decided based on a copy of the application that would be used to if we wanted to borrow that 137?
Yeah, I can ask them, see if they'll do that.
So are you planning on taking all of that out of emergency management or?
This will be all out of 911. So it's all out of the service fund. So there won't be any tax dollars spent on this. It'll all be, or tax dollars, but it's all the 911 tax dollars.
So I know technically, I think the time of mine on balance could technically pay for it. It has to be paid more in, I mean, I mean, you're gonna save some money, I mean, 13,000 dollars by doing it. It's just the, will the fund support that? Or do you have? I, I don't know what you're projecting for the next three years of expenses out of there.
Out of this line item?
Well, not just the line item, but in total.
Oh, the 911, okay, yep. I'm hoping, I'm, I want to build up a little bit in the fund balance so that we can work up to purchasing the new radio consoles for the dispatch center. We're currently using the Avtechs that we had purchased back in 2015. And we didn't upgrade those when we did the radio system because they were still new enough. But we would like to, in the next three to five years, upgrade those. And those are gonna be a hefty price. So we're looking at, you know, right now, if we did it this year, $300,000 for the three consoles, a hundred thousand apiece. But in the next, you know, two, three years, it's gonna go up a little bit, too.
What is, what is our fund balance on that right now? What, what is your...
So in other words, if you, if you use 137,000 now, that, that puts that other project at great risk another year.
It'll put it farther back, yeah. Which, I mean, it, it's not a necessity. I mean, the radios are working now, but it'll be easier on the radio users, the first responders and the dispatchers. We won't have to select, we can only, we can only hear certain talk groups going right now. So if we don't have a talk group highlighted in dispatch, we can't hear the radio people or your first responders talking on that, that frequency. With the new consoles, we won't have that problem. Excuse me. Plus, the new consoles will be Motorola, so we can roll that into our contract agreement that we already pay Motorola for the radio system. And that'll save us paying after, or first wireless, right now, $20,000 out of this line item for maintenance on those Avtech consoles.
How soon do we have to decide on that, Chris?
I told them we wouldn't do this before the first of July because that's the next fiscal year. So they said it's gonna be at least two months prior, or once we sign it, before we can start working on it. So I would like to have it, would it be May? Before May?
Take a deeper look into where your reserves are and take your projections, and then also some documentation from this company to kind of verify what you showed us in summary.
I, I will have, Cody is his name. I told him that I would have to get the information sent to you guys. So I will give him your email addresses so he can start talking to you guys directly about a contract, per se, to get the services started. I just wanted to make sure that the, the board would be open to doing a contract since the 911 Service Commission can't.
I definitely understand that. I like all those factors, but I'd like to know where we have to know when you can say outright versus.
Save the 13,000.
Yeah, wow, yeah. Instead of signing.
And those are the only two options that, that they're offering, Chris?
Yeah, find, either the upfront cost to pay it all off or finance that, that cost.
Well, I don't think we're ready to take any action today. Chris, thank you for the input, and we'll look forward to gathering some more stuff. And certainly, we have enough time. You know, I understand you'd like to know by May 1, so that if whatever we're gonna do, you can have it in place with the new fiscal year. So thanks for all your work. And I think we're going in the right direction. I know it's been kind of a slow path getting to EMD, which has really started this conversation years ago. So I think we're, we're on target to getting that done.
I'll, I'll touch base with Cody and have him, give him all your guys' email information and have him in contact with you.
That'd be great. Thank you so much, Chris. Really appreciate it. Okay, so we are not gonna take any action on that unless I don't hear a motion to approve or anything. So do we, can we just agree to table it, or do we have to take official action to table? Oh, well, then, we're not gonna table it, Chris. No. Okay, 9:48, and discuss and approve signing the Iowa Secretary of State HAVA Cyber Security Grant Agreement. Melissa, what can you tell us about that?
Sorry, to check our, it looks like overall, at the end of January, about 90,000, I think, fund balance there, so.
So that's not an option anyway?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right, so this is a grant that we were made aware of, and this is through public, so it's Public Medical Act. And this is a $10,000 grant that we can apply for at the county, and then we can use this $10,000 for purposes of preparing, preventing, and responding to cybersecurity threats for elections. So this would be something that we put forward to help with our elections, just to make sure that's more secure.
Okay. And how, what's the likelihood of getting the grant if we apply for it? Is it a slam dunk, or is it a difficult process?
You know, we have to feel like we're working, of course, it has to be approved. But I think, I, I think for guidelines we're getting, I think it's, you know, we're pretty, as long as we do the paperwork and things like that, that's, it'll, it'll be a go.
Who, who's assisting on the application?
It's Iowa Secretary of State that turned it up to us.
I'm sorry?
Iowa Secretary of State. We'll do it now.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right. Any other information, anybody request on that grant application? If not, I'd like a motion to approve entering into that application process. Okay, motion by Holmes, second by Armstrong. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries three to nothing. All right, 9:51, discuss and approve the fiscal sponsorship for Page County Conservation Board grant application to the community foundations of Southwest Iowa. John is here. John, would you mind coming up and kind of walking us? We've got a letter, and you need a fiscal agent on your grant application, kind of walk our audience through what, what that is and move that mic up so we can hear you nice and loud. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we need the fiscal sponsorship, basically, because we fall under the county's tax ID number. Since we're not a nonprofit, we're efficient, we fall under counties. We need to just order to qualify for the grant. The grant, actually, the grant amount we're requesting is 11,960. The total cost of the project is 16,960. We make up the other 5,000 out of our budget. Basically, it is for some dredging equipment. We'd be able to really hit the Pioneer project and also be able to kind of maintain and sustain a lot of the other bodies of water, too. Our department's pretty set on being able to sustain the campground and everything above water when it comes to the actual water.
Do you know when, I, I know it was in the main letter, I've got the grant up here, but when are they making these awards? Do you remember?
I believe, yeah, it was sometime in March, I don't know the exact date, but about the middle of March, we should know for sure if we have. I think they want their sponsor, five business days. It was a pretty quick turn.
So any questions from anybody? Kind of understood the, what?
We've had this before, Chris, we've had a three of, I've not recommended.
Is that?
The equipment itself, once you get to have it, you've got the, our revenue, you've got the bill level to analyze, all that, you know?
Absolutely. We've been in contact with the company, and all I see, it's kind of big floating back and forth. It's kind of along next to the child. It's charges.
Okay. Is that form of a motion?
I'd make a motion for the fiscal sponsorship, conservation, board grant application, and stuff like that.
Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. John, what I'd like you to do, I'll sign this document. Could you go to the auditor's office and get, get this email to Tess? You can see one of that today, and then have them file this downstairs?
That's done.
Thank you very much. Thanks for doing that, and then we can have, we'll be down to Tess to have all your applications. Thank you so much. All right, 9:55, discuss and approve opening second floor restroom on the south side. Of course, we closed restrooms in general public during COVID. Now that the governors relaxed things, we've relaxed things in the courthouse. The question is, can we reopen to the general public the second floor restroom?
On, just on the south.
Just on the south side.
So we can be, would have a bathroom for, right, well, apparently, there's not, if you can find bathrooms, so.
Correct, so you have two bathrooms.
Yeah.
What's the reason?
Yeah, it's locked. I think originally, we did that because of, yeah, the cleaning protocols, and I don't know if that's as, I'm guessing that's still a concern.
I guess, I will say from the perspective of sometimes, it is nice to sometimes have one restroom for employees to use. And right now, we have, we have, we used to have bathrooms open in the basement all the time to the public. And we have let that close, shut for a while now. And I think that's more cleaning for, wasn't it, and just to control the inflow and, you know, how, you know?
Sometimes not using public, not, not, it's good for public, you usually.
Well, they're, they're on the other side of the...
And maybe, to Jacob's point, maybe since the employees only have access to the ones downstairs, maybe the rest of the courthouse restrooms, I think, on March 9, when we have a public hearing, if we have a lot of folks here, it probably would be nice to have that restroom up here. How many, how many restrooms we have in this building?
We have the basement, which are local.
Right, which right now are employees only. I mean, right now, the public's not utilizing. One on the north, one on the south, on second floor. Just have these two on the north.
I don't know, I don't know. It's a public building.
First floor, you're going to have to come up to second. If you're on third, what do you difference going down to second? I can see opening those up on second floor as more open. I, I, I don't know. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah.
If it's nine, there's gonna be, maybe in there, or several people, some of the assessors?
So I, I guess I don't say, no, don't call. She's going to be over above the, open them all. With everything else going on outside and everything else. That was one reason we shut them down, basically, was just to say ahead of the end. I mean, all honesty, we've got sanitation, we've got the sanitizer outside the door, so we've got, there's, there's nobody using the motor.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Well, I'd never say to motion, either way. I mean, the request on the agenda is restrooms on the south side. Somebody wants to amend that to all second, third floor restroom, we can vote on that. restroom, we can vote on that.
Before we take a moment, I'm sure that they're all set up. That you can bid in.
I don't see any issues. Are you planning on opening the basement ones then?
No, 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 leave that alone.
Second and third floor.
I'd make a motion to amend this proposal and open all restrooms.
Second and third floor.
Second and third floor.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to the second, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries three to none. Okay. Jacob, I just got a text out on how old it is, please make sure you speak into, speak into the microphone. All right, so, second and third floor is open. Okay, it's 10 o'clock and we have our guest, Linda Bryan, if you'd come up to our microphone, please. Don't be a mic hog here, Brian, let it have some time.
Yes, in order to talk with our Page County Pierce Creek Water Share, thank you guys for being on tour.
Yes.
I kind of oversee a bunch of water shares in Southwest Iowa, and Pierce Creek, I would say is very good on maintenance and stuff like that, we've taken care of it very well over the years. I want to say four, five years ago, I think we worked with JD, Young Moon, Moyn, some road, road structures and stuff, probably would have those mowed again. Here, I think there's three road structures, they kind of turned into saplings and, and that, but kind of what I'm here today, there are eight sites that went originally installed, had cathodic protection systems incorporated in, and pipes, and in theory, what cathodic protection does is we buried some sacrificial anodes, in fact, oh, and anode was supposed to corrode in place of. Most of the time, cathodic protection, those anodes only last 25, maybe 30 years, and these dams have been in since early to late 70s, so.
We're beyond that.
We're, we're a little bit lax in getting them replaced, so in theory, if we say the first 25 years was, the anodes were being corroded and being used up, probably this last 20 to 25 years would probably have been starting to attack the pipes. Now, pipes too had some, they call it, it's, it's coated pipes, so most of the pipe, we'd have to get cleared through some paths as well, so I still think it's, it's very much in need of going ahead and replacing anodes, if you guys think it's time to do it. Each, we did this on the St. Reddick dams, north, count on the west, north, west, east, I mean, east and north east side of Reddick here about eight to 10 years ago. County engineer, we worked with the sponsors up there, we've kind of worked with them a little bit, and we attacked three to four sites per year. Usually, it was small enough, we had a little contractor, we had his excavator on site, we went to dug holes, replaced the anodes, and at that time, that county engineer had the testing, special equipment, actually attached it to the pipe, I don't know if you have, if Page County has that stuff, but we worked with them, and then some of the O and M budget turned around one second ago, and Reddick is how we have it.
So, the, the testing equipment, was that to, to check the mill coating of the protection on that pipe, or what was it?
I should say installation, we're not supposed to damage the coating of the pipe very well, or very much, so it's a special little blast furnace with lockout, is what it is, well, just a dot, we're not supposed to weld on pipes or anything like that, but they, they have that, that equipment in Montgomery County, we utilize secondary road partner equipment to replace the damage. I, I couldn't find my, my stuff 10 years ago, but I was thinking each one of the sites ran between $800 and $1500, $1600 for a site. I have done a little legwork, and when the weather cooperates, I'm going to try to get our state geologist, the dinner she has out from Des Moines, and we do some resistivity tests in soils, there are small bulges in soil, a giant less than one bolt, and we're talking just milliamps, we're testing that, that's the milliamps and electrons. Got time, so through that testing, we got a spreadsheet program that we can sign to determine what, what anodes we're going to use, how big an anode we're going to use, and each, each site's going to be different. The original ones had 17 pound magnesium nanodes, 24 or 6 bags per site, so I did check with company in Ankeny this morning, and that, that pipe supplier said he had never sold anodes, you know, probably 10 plus years, to give me another source for finding them, but I know they're out there.
Sure. So that was eight or 10 years ago, you did the work in Montgomery County, do you think, and, and you remember that, at that time, it's being 800, 1500 or 1600 dollars? So, my question is, from a budget standpoint, how do we accomplish that? Is that a conservation budget item, is that a general fund item, is that on our end?
Pierce Creek's got an O and M budget, and I don't get track of them much, but how much is in that budget right now?
So something that I'll probably need to do.
Typically, I think you'd give Pierce Creek going in X dollars per year.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that.
Do you remember off the top of your head, what we have allocated Pierce Creek?
Contamination.
I don't have my budget book.
Which, which would be different. Okay, yep, you're right, I remember that. Yeah, water should make us a thousand dollars a year.
So what kind of balance do we have?
Doesn't show that on the front page.
Pardon me?
Oh, I got you, okay. Thousand dollars a year, whether, and then the sponsors, them or not, if it stays in that budget, a thousand dollars.
No.
So there's really no set aside there?
I, I would, I, I would really put in a plug to try to change that, because the whole idea, made in water shifts were done, is there were mill established, and all that quarter mill, which was, or any other, we're even, was supposed to be set aside at an O and M budget, for sometime in the future, for maintenance like this, very few water shifts have ever enforced it, so if there happens to be something catastrophic, like failure, dam breach.
You're kind of in trouble.
We're, yeah, sponsors are in trouble, because there's not designated pot money for repairs.
This is same as the, this is different than the soil operation, right?
Yeah, because I mean, what we do would be more for, like, projects that we need to terracing on, the protection, or tries to, I mean, trying to do that, this is a whole separate process.
Okay.
So, I guess what, what I'd like to see us do, gather a little more information to, to the best of our ability, to kind of get a, a project cost, and then we need to figure out how, how we can, you know, get that funded, which I'm guessing that is, is probably not a one, totally a one-year project, maybe it is, maybe you know.
It could be, depends on how many dollars that you guys want to.
How many sites do we have? There's eight sites, so if there's $1500 for a site, that's 12 pounds, so, so if not, you know, split them up, we can do, 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 do,
So, yeah, let's just keep the line of communication open, we'll do a little more research on funding.
Can that finally be signed here after? Was that, can we start doing that or not? I'm sure one day, I would like to know if there's something I should.
Yeah. I don't know from, I mean, I'm not, is that the rules?
We have to start in the fund floor and start saying, you know.
Kind of like Johnson Creek, or the Johnson Fund, and things like that, where the, the money is set aside for.
Yeah, yes and no, because that's more of an agency, you probably want a special revenue, so it would be like, like, the Canadian fund and like, the.
Are we, are we collecting a mill levy on that, as Brian suggested, or we are not? Maybe we should look at that, to fund it.
That is, that is something to consider, but.
I remember that.
I've been, 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 I believe it's only for the water, for the fakers in that watershed.
Right, I'm sure it works the same way as drainage districts.
Linda will research on that, on the low levy for that water shit, just to, and see what we can do, and if we can get down to the end of the future and discuss about the viable solution.
Then in the meantime, we'll, you know, count you to do a little additional research, someone's going to take it, and I don't know, secondary roads sometimes, you know, depending on their busy season, they may not be an option for you.
Like I say, I can work with JD, if that's even on, if they're running the system installation or something like that. Probably when the weather cooperates, like say the geologists come out, we'll do some field testing, get a design, and then make slides, and, and.
Okay, I think that would help us if we had a little more information, a target. And I'm curious, I don't have the full report in front of me, which I read, I appreciate you and Donna and, I'm sure Linda helped out, getting all that data to us. What was the, the two coatings, there was galvanized, what was the other that proved to be?
For years, galvanized organic metal pipes is pretty well standard, still is, but probably here in the last 10, 15 years, there have been luminized coated pipe, and it's proven really, really more effective than galvanized metal pipe.
Okay.
Gets corroded.
That caught my eye, because I come from a family of galvanizers who would probably want to, want to challenge that statement, but, but, and I don't know, I know galvanized have been years.
Luminized pipes are typically 25% higher than galvanized. So, you know, for the, for the mill increase in price, some of our larger energy has dams, that's why they luminize metal pipe, just the fact that it's kind of has a science-based history behind it, rather than spend the, you know, 15 to $2,000 for cathodic protection system on private dam.
Any other questions? We enjoyed our tour, I think we can say that, and we're concerned about how, how 20 years from now, or 25 years from now, how all that looks, I think things have changed considerably.
It was, I, I would say thanks to all those agents and water shit up there, because they, they have taken.
Good care.
Personal attention to, 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 to.
They sure have.
It shows. Hopefully, in another 50 years, they'll, they'll be, be there, still serving the purpose of great control of flood control.
Hope so. Well, Brian, thanks a lot, just as you get information, pass it along, shoot it to all of us, and we'll kind of reconvene when we have more, more data, a game plan can be put together, so. Super, well, thank you, Jacob, I appreciate it. All right, so, no action taken today on that. Stretch his legs. Is there, Alan stretches legs, anybody on Zoom or in the room that has any public comment? Give you a few minutes to think about it. I think maybe, I could be wrong, I think it's placement. Yeah, I think, I think you're, you, you got some echo between here and here, I think if you put it up a little closer, it minimized some of the echo, I don't know.
Just, yeah.
What's that? All right, hearing no public comment, can I get a motion to approve claims? Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes, any other discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, he voted too, all right, well, you get to vote on your, on your birthday. So, how about the minutes?
Back on, on the 11th, just at the start of the second paragraph, it just, the president would like to see countywide mask mandate to remain in place for the county.
No, we didn't have.
Just the kind of, we weren't that, what she would like to see a countywide mask mandate, basically, what she wanted in the county.
Second paragraph.
The president would like to see a countywide mask mandate, basically, period.
Put in place for the county.
Put in place, we didn't have one. If, if you don't have a thing, I'm, 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 I'm out here, in the meeting on the 9th, I'll say one of them, now, we're talking with the Samuel, Samuel's group, you go down far enough, it's a home state of Fremont, Taylor County, or Taylor, there's a great bunch of geologists did not go through these development needs first, I don't know if they did or didn't, I, I just said I would, it would be something we could look to, look into what they did, I don't know if they did or didn't.
Look into what they did, I don't know if they did or didn't. I just wanted to study what they did, and maybe copy what they did. I'll tell you where I'm at there.
Can you find it? Yeah, maybe, yeah, we should, we should look the same on the screen as it does on paper.
With my, with my two, I just wanted to study what they did. I don't know if they did a person, everyone, or not.
Yeah, I think they both hired for us.
My comment was the way we can copy.
Hired Gene Clapper from Tabor to be your community champion, that's what built the jail in Fremont. Again, in that paragraph, it's Greg Wild, not Brett Wild. Yeah, it's Greg. No problem. Brett, brother. Okay, we have motion to second, all in favor say aye. Okay, and motion to adjourn, second, all in favor say aye. Thanks for joining us today, stay warm and safe.